Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let me check the -- let me go check the answering machine real quick.
Okay. Since we've advertised this meeting for the agenda purposes and also for any other business that may come before the township, this time we'll...
That might be her.
It's not.
It's not? Okay.
Take our regular order of business and recognition business.
Okay. Stanley?
Yeah. I understand this is about a budget, as you said, Henry, this is other business.
Yes.
The Penn Township Sampler, which knows the front page is all about the budget meeting tonight. And the question on the independent audit. On the independent audit, all I would like to say on it is, when we call it an independent audit, so it was, I called my attorney after that meeting that night to ask him what legal ramifications we had on being a, calling it a audit. He said, "None." He made a mistake. I said, "Yes, we did." He said, "That's the way it goes." So we can call it a preview, a review, comparison, whatever you want to call it. That's what we did. Sorry, we called it an independent audit. Life goes on.
Okay.
As we talk about it here, which to me keep beating the dead horse. Thank you.
Yeah. And I took an awful beating from a lot of people. How could an independent audit conflict with what we're saying different than what we really have? And so somewhere along the line, you have to answer these people, answer those questions, and I choose to do it at the meeting in the past, and I also do it at the front sampler. So that was the reason why that was put in there, Stanley. And our auditors agreed, and it was all brought out in four out there. But not everybody comes to the meeting, so...
Thank you. Not everybody comes to meetings. That's not my fault. That's not your fault. And shame, shame on them if they don't.
And so that becomes part of the problem.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that out and tell you how it felt and what the deal was.
Okay.
Before going further, Stanley's also recording.
Oh, yes, I am recording the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, Ellen.
Brian?
Porta John, right?
No, it does not.
Lee?
Yes, October 26th, I'm having, it's not for public consumption, but we're having a public sale at my mother's house, and I need to put a porta john in, and I don't know how to protect that one today with you, Ellen.
I have sympathy for you, dealing with this, people.
Well, I ordered porta john for out there. I checked with the balance, said, "Yeah, you need a permit for it." So I sent them the information to do the porta john permit, and I got about the same runaround as what I got with the holding tank, only I have less signatures now than I did with the holding tank.
Yeah. He needs a porta john for a special event.
A special event, yeah. Always been easy to get in the past.
Well, it's not us.
Yeah, I know it's not us.
They're telling me that this is the first time they ever knew that they had to sign a contract with me for a porta john for Penn Township, and they said, some lady named Jen, she said, "We've never done it before."
But is it, usually the permit issued, Helen, to those that are holding a special event?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
But it's the same, it's the same signature form as on a...
But I didn't think it required anything from the people. You paying those people, they're going to dispose of it.
Yeah.
It's just the same thing as saying, "We agree to dispose of it."
Well, I think that'll go with, I guess it should go without saying.
See, bottom line is, she says, "I've never done anything like this." And she said, "This is actually a two-year contract." He says, "I'm not going to sign a two-year contract with you for, you know, the, that's the way the thing goes with the paperwork that's there." She said, "I'm not going to sign a two-year contract for you to have a porta john for three days, two days, for a public sale."
No, on porta johns, what we do is we, when we issue it, we issue it a, from this point to this point.
Yeah, you get it for three days and...
And you don't have to do the escrow and any, I understand.
The form doesn't say that. The form actually says two years.
Yes.
That we send to them to sign.
Well, actually, the ordinance says two years. The form doesn't.
Well, they read the ordinance itself, and they said, "We're not signing anything that's going to tie us in for two years."
But if it was only, if it's only for a three-day permit, the days itself would speak for itself. Lee?
Which tells me what?
Didn't you say it for three days?
Yeah, if we, if it's for three days, we say...
And so the permit itself's going to speak, that's all the longer you have it for. It won't be for two years.
No.
I understand that. And I, true, trust me, I don't want to put a porta john in for two days or three days, but I have to. And the ordinance that you have on the books that I have to have them sign states it's for two years.
There is a section in the ordinance that states that, but it's also talking about holding tanks in the same paragraph.
Well, then you've got something that needs changed on this end. Big time.
Yeah.
If there's a fee, tell me what the fee is. I'll pay the fee.
There isn't. It's just getting approval.
Yeah. You don't charge nothing for someone who has a special event or something. When the boy used to have the trials and stuff down at the place, they got permits for one day or two day, so that they have it. People come in there and dropped it off and turned around and cleaned them out and took them out, Lee.
And hey, I'm happy with that. Like, they're refusing to sign anything that says that they're responsible for it for two years.
Well, you're going to make sure it leaves, aren't you, Lee?
Pardon me?
You're going to make sure it leaves, aren't you?
I don't think it's going to leave.
Yeah. Why can't you make an exception for this case that he gets a permit?
Who has to sign, Helen?
Yeah.
The owner, or the applicant, Lee, the cleaner, the disposal, and us.
I can't imagine it.
Never had a problem before. And Baker has done it in the past with us.
Yeah.
Baker has done it in the past. Oak Tree bought Baker out.
I understand.
Oak Tree is, they read the ordinance, and they are going through, they finally went down to Harrisburg, you get to Harrisburg now, to take care of the holding tank part of it. But it's been a, it's been a hassle. It's just been a true hassle. And, you know, and this porta john thing for something that's going to be there for three days...
Make a motion, and we'll issue it.
I'll make a motion that we grant even the porta john permit be granted to Lee for three days specifying the date said. Subject, that in this particular case, that this article or this portion of it gets changed, that there becomes an ordinance strictly for the porta bands different than the two-year contract required for the holding tank. If there's confusion there, I'm sorry, folks, I didn't know. I'll make that into form of a motion.
Hold on, wait a minute. I don't mean, you say, "Subject to," that makes it sound like you've got to make this change before you can issue the permit.
No.
I don't think you want that in the motion.
Okay, well, you say however you want it. The intention is that it be granted now, okay, fully knowing that you're going to change that portion of the ordinance.
Yes.
And that's only to say, so we don't get flooded in here, you're granted for Lee, that there's some action taken, and we get it changed.
I second the motion.
Or other, okay, thank you. Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Come in and call me tomorrow with the dates.
Okay. That portion of it, Helen, we need to go to work on right away to get changed.
Yes.
The special events people shouldn't have, there's probably other people that have it out there, Lee, that's not going to question you, choose to bill Baker and them, well, they got a question, so...
Thank you.
You bet.
But you have my sympathy.
Yes.
Um, Brian? Oh, no, we got brought you. Anything yet? John? That's it.
Can I add one thing?
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, October 26th, we're having a sale there. If the police department, because we are now cleaning up, we're selling all my dad's stuff since he passed. If the police department can make some rounds in around 99 Equidog Road in the evening, because we have trailers and tables flying full.
What date is that, guys?
The date?
What date is that again?
October 26th.
Is that the date of the sale?
That's the date of the sale.
And you will be starting the night before getting everything ready?
Well, we've already started.
Okay.
We've worked four days just in the garage. So it's... I stink.
That's on record.
Thank you.
Minutes.
Nothing else? Okay. Disposition of meeting minutes here, recordings on 9/28, 9/16, and 9/25, that I'd like to make a motion that those minutes be retained instead of after having them so many days that they are no longer available. And that is all because of the huge controversy on Rupp Drive out there, and all the testimonies been offered by everybody in regards to that. May end up have to be called upon to resolve the issue as to who said what and what was said. So I don't know how much farther that problem's going to pursue out there, but I want to protect the township from what was said, who said it by those meetings. I'll make that into form of motion and retain them.
I think you meant the recordings.
The recordings, yes.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so...
Yeah, I will file that in the Rupp Road docket.
Okay. P and R, purchase a stove.
You're up.
Yes, I'm here this evening to, you have these in your package here. I got a quote from Lowe's and Home Depot to ask approval for the purchase of a new stove in the kitchen. The one at Lowe's.
One at Lowe's? Okay.
Which is cheaper than the one at Home Depot.
We do need a new stove out here. It gets used a lot, and she would not have got it.
It's no longer our responsibility.
Got those proposals. I'll make a motion that we grant the rec board the okay to purchase that new stove to get it installed.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so...
Okay.
Old business.
I don't have any.
I have one thing, Helen, just for the record. And I think it's important, I'll put it out there. Questions on the fiber optic cable that's going back through the cove. We received a PA-1 call today with no markings on it, but said it's approximately 12 foot off of the edge of the road. And that puts it on everybody's private property instead of within the township right away. It's a contractor from where, Helen?
I don't have those over here.
Okay, but it's a contractor from out of state. We made contact with them and said that they're having a meeting supposedly tomorrow around nine o'clock with the pipeline down there, because they haven't got that issue resolved getting across the pipeline yet. And they're running out of time to get this done. My main concern is that we, they expect us to answer to a PA-1 call, which is not white lined, which we have to do every time we make one, identify it, and then they just state that it's going to be three foot deep, 12 foot from the edge of the road. They're no longer in the township right away if they do that. So looking for everybody that's unhappy about getting on their ground and then some of the hassle that residents have went through down there. I'd like that made a matter of record here that I will be there tomorrow to see if we can't get that resolved, that they stay within the confines of our right of way so they don't impose on people's private property. Yes, Stanley?
Do they pay to go on that right of way?
They pay us a permit fee. There's, we have a fee scheduled in here, yes, Stanley.
And that's it?
Yeah, $600 and what, some dollars.
Yeah, it was $650, something like that.
Reason I'm asking, I know there's a lawsuit with AT&amp;T putting fiber optics on the railroad, and they came along and put it on the private property instead of the railroad property.
Yes.
And that went, I guess, from Harrisburg or Pittsburgh affiliate or wherever. I've been getting, my ground goes to the railroad. And I've been getting notices to join that lawsuit.
Yeah, on that, yeah.
Apparently they're, they do this all the time. Don't know what they're doing and just, they do.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure don't happen down here, you know? So, I mean, these people promised me the world, they'd market, they'd walk it with us. So far, they haven't lived up to anything that they've told me. And I got a big concern down there. Will they come in through their day trim brush, just through the limbs alongside the road? I asked them down on Cove Road, are they going to chip? Oh, yeah, we'll be back to chip them up tomorrow. Well, I guess that remains to be seen, because they threw half of them down over the bank in the game commission. Rest of them are still lying there. So I just wanted that made for a matter of record, Helen, that we will follow up on that. Try to, try to keep this thing congenial down there with them, and I will be there tomorrow morning at nine o'clock waiting for someone to show up.
Did they say, did they say whether they're going to trench or plow, or what are they going to, did the one...
They say trench three foot deep, John, you know what I'm saying, but yet they don't have, you know, they don't, last meeting, I was there with them at the pipeline, they didn't have the okay from the pipeline to do anything. Now, the contractor that's going to do it is the one that's named, he made a PA-1 call from Pittsburgh, or from another town, I think it's a 410 area code. Can't think of the name of it or the contractor. But I looked at it, but I'll be there tomorrow with it. He probably don't know anymore about it, and I doubtful if they gave him copies of the plans, where it's to be located or anything, because talking to him today on the PA-1 call, he just says, "Well, I just filed a PA-1 call to come in and do the work." And he has 12 foot off of the edge of the road, which clearly in all the drawings in the permit was issued based on being within our right of way.
Yeah. And it, what the permit also specifies, it will be as per the plans attached to the permit.
That's correct.
For the application?
No, the permit.
The perm.
Okay, which were part of the application.
Yeah, the application came in with plans. We took those plans, once we got done talking to them and all, and attached it to the permit saying it will be with the...
Good. I wonder if they mistook it and said it should have been from the center of the road. That would, that would put it still within township right of way, but it would put it, you know, it would be outside the paved area.
Well, clearly says from the edge of the road.
Right, right. But I'm wondering, yeah, that was, there was a miscommunication that in there, but, yeah, that would have to be resolved, because they don't have, they don't have the right of way, they haven't negotiated any of that right of way with anybody.
No, with nobody. No. And, yeah, I was talking with them today, I asked them, "Well, what if the pipeline don't grant it, are you going overhead?" Well, then if we're going overhead, which they did discuss on the wires at that portion, they're definitely clear off the township right of way. Those poles on other people's private property. So it's been a tough sell with these people all the way through, John. Let me tell you, a tough sell. So the only thing you do is try to stay on top of it. Anything underneath their business, Helen?
I'm going to request permission to be paid for the newsletter.
Okay. Need a motion to get paid, Helen?
No, I can pay myself without it, but I thought it was a nice ask.
I make a motion that we grant Helen permission to get paid for the newsletter that was generated.
I'll give you the amount. I second the motion.
Yeah, do you want the amount, Helen?
It's $1,000.
$1,000, yeah.
$1,000 roads, yeah.
To the sum of $1,000, okay?
I second that motion, too.
Motion been made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay? Ayes have it, so... Budget is before you for review. Been involved with the budget, taking a look at where we've been through the year. Police have prepared a budget. The office has prepared a budget. And this is for everybody to take a look at. Not cast in stone, subject to change, but all the information is there before you in the budget. You have anything to offer in regards to the budget, Helen? Or the proposed budget?
Well, it's coming in $13,000 more than last year's, or this year's budget. That's just, that's the revenues, I'm looking at round one. It's just the prices of things have gone up.
Okay.
That's what it is.
And there may be, and there may be areas where you can change that, yes?
Yes.
Just takes a hard look at it.
Mm-hmm. Well, one of the things that put it up a little bit was the legal fees for the franchise and wireless agreements.
Yes.
That definitely put it up, because we'll have two payments on that next year. So you'll see the legal fees jump from what we had last year at $6,500 to $17,000, so...
Yes, Lee.
I have a question. You're talking about franchise, and thank you for bringing it up. Does that kind of limit anyone else from coming in here? You know, I just heard someone the other day saying that they tried to get their network in to do their high-speed internet, and they're saying, "Nope, we don't have a franchise."
I don't know if it limits it.
Don't limit it, no. Unlimited, Lee. No. But there will be an ordinance that'll be controlling it, that they, if somebody else knew one to come in, that we receive revenue off of it.
So that, they would have to have their own franchise agreement?
Yes.
So anyone that comes in needed to have their own franchise agreement, then with the township, Dish or Verizon or whoever it might be that wants to supply.
I don't know about Dish, but that...
Dish, Dire TV would be totally separate.
Dish is satellite. You don't need a franchise for that.
Well, if they were doing internet?
It's not over the, it's not over the wires.
Okay.
So it is not an exclusive agreement? In other words, they have the exclusive right to provide internet service, cable and internet service?
Cable and internet.
You're saying they don't have an exclusive right?
That's correct. Anyone can come in and apply for a franchise for whatever they'd like to provide to the township residents.
Where, where does that stand? Have you reached agreement with them on the, on the fee yet or not?
That's, that's in process at the present time.
Still in process.
Okay, just got started, John.
Okay.
I mean, it was only, only approved to go last meeting.
Yeah.
But it's in progress immediately.
Can you clarify, the, what went up was the...
The legal fees went up.
No, I'm telling you, you said it's $13,000 increase in that, that's in the, on the expenditure side of it.
On the expenditure side.
Yeah. Okay. Have you gotten into forecasting revenues yet?
Because you can. That is also an increase of, oh, 12, I'm sorry. Around $4,000 is what I'm estimating, understanding that we always guess low on revenue and high on expense. There's not much else to do unless you want to talk about individual subjects.
I guess probably a lot of people in arrested police budget numbers have stayed exactly the same as last year. So there's been no increase there.
Have you, so then you haven't, now have you gone to Duncan and begun any of that discussion yet?
No, we haven't. I haven't, but Duncan's been given a copy of this, this latest budget, where they're at, you know what I'm saying? I mean, and all...
Oh, so in other words, you're basically, you're starting the same, you're in the same ball, general ballpark with them as you are with, you know, in terms of the township, in terms of you, you've developed a budget and you're going to present it, and then, and then ultimately it'll be split down the middle or however it's split, you know, in the agreement.
Well, the budget's been, the budget's been completed. We had to submit it, first of all, to Penn Township.
Township here first.
And with Penn Township approving it, then we submitted to Duncan, and it is a 50-50 split. And the budget, as Mr. Holman says, remains exactly as it was in 2013.
So have you, the township, you haven't approved their, their budget yet, have you?
No. Only taking a look at what they've taken at this offer, our opinions on it, they presented budget like I presented road budget. You know what I'm saying? And, and that, anybody could challenge me on the road budget or say, "Why this or why that?" They prepare their part of it, Helen prepares her part of it, the office, et cetera, that part of the budget, the three of them come together to make a total budget on our, on our expenditures, and, and it's all on expenditures of what you plan that you want to do that year. That's, that's a big thing. So they presented their budget, but basically you'll find that there are the same line items are there for the workers comp, for, for training, for everything else, you know? The line item, the bottom number, is exactly the same as what we had last year.
This year.
So, huh?
This year.
Yeah, this year, yeah. The same as we had this year.
Are you, what happens with, with the police budget when it comes to replacing equipment? In other words, you got brand new, you know, I mean, you have, you have a fleet of solid vehicles at this point in time, but you realize they're, they're only going to last for a couple of years, and then you have to replace them. Now, do you, does, do you rely on the capital reserve or the, the capital fund of the township to buy those? Or are you, do you budget in a sinking fund for your vehicles now then, you know? So how, how does the police department work relative to the township when it comes to equipment like that?
But then their budget is the line item that's incorporated into our capital reserve for that, which doesn't come out of a capital reserve that we put aside. So that is a capital reserve number that's put there, just like they have one last year. It's again there this year. And I think the number plugged in was $9,000.
Basically, what they have, what they don't spend, we're going to put, move $9,000 from the general fund over to capital reserve designated for police. And it's just designated for them, just like we did this year on, we had money come in for refunds from the police items. We transferred that money over to capital reserve for the purchase of the police vehicles.
And as we do that over two or three years, then that's, hopefully we replace a car in two or three years, but...
So you're, you're comfortable and that, that's enough, that that'd be sufficient to build up a reserve for able to...
We believe so, yeah.
Okay. Jody has a question. Jody has a question.
Yes, Chair.
I thought, and maybe I'm, maybe my ears are all running together, but I thought, Cliff, at one point you had said that the budget was inaccurate and that you had, hadn't calculated some things in and that the budget amount wasn't appropriate. I know it was one of the meetings that Henry wasn't here.
That must have been last year during the budget meeting.
That might have been the prior budget coming into 2013's budget. That budget was, was made by, or ex-chief Schaefer. It wasn't made by us, and maybe that's what you're referring to?
Okay, well, I responded to that comment also, that Henry had taken a mindful eye over that budget. But this, I found this earlier this year.
And that's the one you're talking about, Jody. That budget there was, was, when it was first presented, was really, well...
Core.
Core.
Right, but this was after...
And then, and then it was after, when that budget was adopted, believe me, that first year that you'd done this, it was a tight budget. I wasn't sure that these guys were going to be able to make it work out that year. That's why you went back. And after the first year that you'd done this thing, you had a good idea exactly. I mean, it was, it was a crapshoot on the number the first year, you have to admit that. We made it. We didn't violate that budget, but there was needs there that it had to be changed later on and to, to the number where we're at now.
What was the increase from last year to this year in the total?
From 2013 to 2014?
No, from 2012 to 2013.
Give me a second.
In the budgeted amount, necessarily the expenditure.
I'm, I'm looking, yes. I'm looking. 134 minus 167.
And that wasn't, that wasn't to accommodate the new vehicles?
The new vehicle, you explained the new vehicle.
The new vehicles were purchased this year, 2013.
Right. That's what I'm asking. The difference between the 12 to the 13 budget was 33,000. They were purchased in 13. Was that 33,000 representative of those new vehicles?
It was part of that 33,000, yes.
Okay. How much?
How much should we spend on new vehicles?
I'm curious, how, how much the difference was minus the vehicles between the 12 budget and the 13 budget? I'm curious, how much the difference was minus the vehicles between the twelve budget and the thirteen budget? That's my question.
That's the question. I may have to get back to you on that number.
Okay, that's fine. That's fair. Thank you.
Are you, just to kind of, are you envisioning any other, you know, equipment? What's your equipment purchases, you know, any other major this year?
No.
This year, you mean, so far?
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, in fourteen. In other words, what's your...
We upgrade computers and that stuff, but nothing that we foresee any major equipment.
One of the meetings, I think somebody talked about cameras for the cars.
Yeah, we're looking, well, we're looking into actually a grant for those. So we wouldn't have to put any money out.
How's the grant money tracked then when it comes in? And how many grants are we doing a year?
Well, police department, we've, probably this year we'll have three, right?
Thirteen?
Well, no, aggressive driving will probably be there. The aggressive driving, if we get it, won't hit till fourteen. In thirteen, we are part of what's known as the Buckle Up PA Grant, which is the Click It and Ticket Program. You see the billboards, you know, one stop, two citations. We're part of that. That's the only active grant we have right now. We are being looked at for an increase from PennDOT into what they call the aggressive driving grant. And we're also looking at a, was it a cat new ring grant?
Feral.
Feral cat grant.
No comment.
Did they answer Lee's question enough? I don't think they did. That was a quick one.
Howard, Howard, the track.
How's it being tracked? Who watches it? Who tracks it?
The money, the money is actually, is funneled through us. It comes from the federal government, goes to PennDOT. PennDOT has hired a private company to watch over the money and to dish it out and to handle it. It's tracked by a company up in Skuggel. It's the...
United...
North American Traffic Safety...
Coalition or something like that?
Coalition or something.
I'm not going to pull the check to the check.
They decide by looking at the crash statistics in each jurisdiction, who needs money to bring the crash level down or the traffic accident level down. They decide how much money to fund each jurisdiction. They notify us of the funding available after we apply for it. They then tell us how we must use the money, what hours we can use the money for, what the officers must do to earn that money. And they then get a report from us after the grant is over, showing our totals, the hours worked, where we were, what we accomplished. And then if we meet all the grounds and the guidelines of the grant, they reimburse us for the money spent on payroll.
Man, how does that show up then in payroll?
It has its own code, budget code. And so when I do payroll, it's under that and grants are under the township side, not the borough side. When we pay it, that's on the township side. The borough doesn't have a grant, in our budget, does not have a grant line item. They pay the employer taxes, the township pays the employer taxes for that hours. But it's separate, it kept separate. And also on the expense side, it's kept separate between, from wages, wage grants and other money grants for the police.
If you're, if you're more interested in the program, they do have a website. It's called Buckle Up PA. You can go right on the internet and explains the whole program.
So it's a reimbursement. You and we, the township incurs the cost, the police department incurs the cost and then you're reimbursed somewhere down the road, somewhere, you know, along the line. Okay, does that, how does that then show up on the books? Is it, is it a re, now, if you don't get the grant, if the grant doesn't pay out until 2014? Or is it, is it typically...
They do it pretty much like that. We usually get it two weeks after we submit all the paperwork.
Is it, is it, do you submit it like for a month at a time, you know, like that? Or do you, or...
Just like grant periods, during the time the grants run. The grants run different periods. The period we just did was called a teenage seatbelt awareness grant. It ran for two weeks and the purpose of the grant was to put enforcement out around the areas where teenage kids would be from six AM to nine PM. The grant ran for two weeks.
Oh, so they're a pretty short duration.
Yes. At the completion of the two weeks, we have one week to submit all our paperwork and it's all done electronically. And then when all the paperwork gets approved, two weeks later, they're cut, we get cut a check.
So is that nine o'clock, because there wiggle room in that nine o'clock?
Not according to PennDOT. PennDOT is very tough.
Just curious. They were in my driveway at nine o'clock.
Well, they might have been on our dime. Just because the grant was over doesn't mean they stopped writing.
I got it.
And on the payroll side, it is separated. I have it showing that that's money, it was for the grant. Because on their time cards, they put down, it was grant time. So it's, I could go up and call the account number up and do it.
Then, if I understand it correctly, we should be actually getting more hours out of an officer than...
That is correct, and you do.
Yeah. I was just going to say that if you, yeah, money's coming from somewhere. You don't get twenty-four seven, one or the other, because you cannot both. There's many people here in the street at one time.
I have to say, last weekend I saw Lancaster and Zampagna more than I really care to.
Did that, did that answer your question, Mike?
Yeah, I think I understand the process now.
I have a question on the grants though. Did they, if that covers your salaries and stuff, is there administrative fees then that you can put in there? No?
No.
Okay.
We cannot put administrative fees. We cannot put fuel costs. We can up the wear and tear on the vehicle.
Processing the wages for the part timers, you guys can't take that off of your...
It's only for additional officers too. It doesn't affect the officer that's already assigned.
The officer has to be earmarked working the grant.
That grant.
So not only did we have one or two officers out working the grant, we still had the officer working on the regular payroll, patrolling the borough and the township.
Do they specify their salary?
It's whatever salary you pay them.
Well, so then it goes by prevailing wage.
When I was in Harrisburg, my patrol officers made over thirty dollars an hour on the grant. My patrol officers here do not make thirty dollars an hour.
They get more hours.
They get more hours.
For their money because they make less money here. So if you get a two thousand dollar grant in Harrisburg, that's twenty minutes, you know, up here it's a lot. So these grants are amounting to two or three thousand dollars a grant, if it's not forty or thirty thousand dollars a grant?
No, no.
I do have to follow up. I made the comment about Lancaster and Zampagna. They both are absolutely love their jobs.
Yes, they do.
They are, they are the most, Zampagna helped, we had a woman, ate firehouse frequent. And he's like, this is why I left my job. I'm like, really? And he said, I, I just, I do. And he was, I saw him at the football game after that altercation. He's like, I wish, I wish I was full-time. And Lancaster, the same thing. We had thirteen oh five, frequent flyer, crashing, banging. She came down that day to give a statement and she's like, I love working here.
She actually quit a full-time job to come here.
She loved it.
And Officer Munch has, you know, built us and very professional, very, very, did a very nice job. I was impressed. We were really impressed.
That's what we strive for.
Do you split the grants in half between Duncan and...
No.
Didn't think so. Wait, wait here, you're answering.
There are grants. The grants, the grants are given to Penn Township. Because, well...
I know when you say that, it sounds weird.
No, well, because it's Penn Township that has, what they look at is accidents. The amount of accidents in the borough are nowhere as severe or as many as they are in Penn Township. And the primary reason is we have a major highway. So they do not.
That statement being said, I remember a statement earlier this year that there's very few accidents on fifteen because of the patrol. So what happens when you get to less accidents or so few accidents than the grants were paying?
No, they don't. What I have to do then is show PennDOT that because of our enforcement, we're keeping our accident level down. And what PennDOT looks for is what they're calling aggressive accidents or aggressive driving citations. That's the new big PennDOT push. So we're looking for the careless driving, the speeding, the following too closely, the DUIs. I mean, as long as our officers go out and do their job and apprehend these people that are driving like idiots, even though our accident level comes down, that's our goal. And actually, the way PennDOT looks at it is they take an area that's got a high, or we had a, we had a prior area, we had a low-high accident rate. We go out and do excessive enforcement, the accident rate should come down. And if it doesn't, there's another problem we have to look at. But our accident rate does come down. So now it's our job to maintain that low level of accidents and that's what we're striving for now.
Now, during the grant period, some citations are written in the borough that they get, they get fees, the costs from District Justice from that, for those citations that are written in their area.
Yeah, I understand. A lot of the grant money was split between the borough and the township.
Why are you on the accident thing? Coming down this hill to the Legion, is there anything that can be done?
We are in the process right now of trying to get PennDOT. One of the biggest problems we have with...
People don't see the little stop sign.
Well, they don't see the stop sign, but another thing is they don't understand how that stop sign system there works because not everybody has a stop sign. So if you're new to the area and you're coming down two seventy-four to the Legion, you have a stop sign. You're expecting the traffic coming at you to stop. Well, they don't. They don't have to. So people are making left turns and the people coming down the hill that don't know this are expecting them to stop. They're not, and that's one of our problems. We've petitioned PennDOT to put up a sign underneath the stop sign there that says opposing traffic does not stop. We're hoping that that will...
Put a bigger one up, with the marking on the highway.
Like, we really mean it?
We can, we can suggest everything to PennDOT.
People that's not familiar, it's a hard one to see. In the last year, I've had a tractor trailer, like, rod saving.
Stop ahead.
I've had a dump truck, you know, just to make that way. Last Friday, I stopped, nothing coming. I looked up halfway down the hill, there came a car. It was my turn to go. They didn't stop. I stopped and they stopped in front of me and like, what the hell are you doing?
We make a recommendation to PennDOT for them to place flashing light, kind of like they do there at Valley Road in Somerville. They have a light that's telling you, when it starts flashing, it's about ready to turn red.
On fifteen there.
Yeah, but it was a way for us, for them as a, make people aware...
Something more visible is try, you know, stop sign on the road or...
I can assure you that I'll make sure the letters were left from Helen into PennDOT. We are working, trying. If that was a township road down there, we'd have signs up. But since it's PennDOT, we have to go with what they're going to give us or what they will put up and whether they listen or not to us, I guess we may to be seeing.
It's a bad intersection.
And so we are trying, I will tell you that.
I could tell you've got a half answer. They want me to call down to the district, not New Bloomfield District, but District Eight down there, the traffic people. So that's my call tomorrow.
What you guys want at that intersection is a call to Mark Keller.
That, that, that's all hell.
We can, we can scream to the cows come home, but Mark Keller controls the purse strings. And if you can get the state rep to light a fire under PennDOT's butt, you'll get much more action than we ever will.
Would there be any heartburn to move in the red light from Stanley's guy way down to the...
I don't know.
I'm not doing that H O P again.
That topic pattern, that topic pattern working pretty good there.
Yeah, I was going to say amazingly, what they have right now is working. There's no backup on whatever they call that, Business Campus Way. The people coming in, the people coming, I mean, it's...
Night and day.
Yeah.
You want us to send a recommendation and they just punch with the red light standing?
Put it down here.
Yeah, but you have to do that.
Good luck.
Yeah.
That would take a lot more planning.
That's on the plan.
What's this intersection called down here? Is it Bloomfield Road and...
Route two seventy-four and Main Street.
Route two seventy-four and Main Street. Just so when I call in, I'll, I'll send an email up to his office.
Call.
I'll tell him no more cookies if he wants to.
Cookies are cut off.
Put it up, put it up at the bulletin board at the store. Before you can clock in, you must call and complain about this intersection.
There you go.
So what, what, what are you proposing from the road standpoint this year?
What do I propose for the road standpoint? Well, there's a section of road that I've had numerous requests up on Ashmore, off the end of St. John's, it goes back, that is, now's the time to do something with it on Susquehanna Hills before it deteriorates to the point that you can't do anything with it. Same as our par and chip that we done out there. The situation with that road was, it was put in, was put in nice, and then what happened? They come along and put the houses on the other side and they cut all those sewer ladders across that road to get to the other side.
Damn municipal authorities.
What does, it was the developer John that did that, okay? Come along, got permits to cut them across. So the road back there and that cul-de-sac back there is really getting, is a difficult area there to, to, to do anything with. They got real wide shoulders on it. And of course, it was, it was acceptable at the time when that was done. And I'd like to see that before it gets to the point that it breaks up, that we get a good paving job, hot paving job, not tar and chip on that one. That one there needs to have an overlay.
Oh, not over, not tar and chip.
No, that one there needs an overlay. And then it will match the existing road that's up there on it because it was never, never had the base and everything put down there as good as elsewhere. So that one needs a good overlay on it. Got, there's some other areas that I would like to tar and chip, but I'm not sure. With all the cohorts that I got to replace within the cove that are collapsed and went down, I'd like to try to do another year. But we did, we did an awful lot of maintenance. You saw some work done down School High down there, which, I mean, going down Sawmill, which now seems to work. You don't see the stones out in the road anymore, do you? I got some more that I'd like to continue with that. But it seemed like you get, spend time here, you got someone hollering at us. I got, I got gambers out here across from where Morrison's is that we hopefully get that shoulder repaired yet this year. And we were going to, as soon as we get through this fall cleanup, if weather permits, we'll be out there the following Monday, working on that. Like to get that widened down through there and that gutter that's been there for I don't know how many years fixed up before we rewrite the traffic for the bridge down here next year. So we have that. I still got one tap when they get this fiber optics in on getting the road width from Cove Road back to the end of Sawmill there to get that widened. And they jumped me around all summer long. First it was on the right-hand side of the road that they were going to do it. And then they moved over to the left-hand side of the road. Well, you knew not where you were going and what you were doing, so rather than attack that, why we work on a lot of other places, but...
So you're going to, you really didn't spend all of your liquid fuels money this year?
No, no, we didn't.
You banked some of that?
You have to, John, or you don't have enough to do anything.
And so you would anticipate that you'll bank some from that in 2014 then also?
Hopefully, and then that, if that, if that's decent, that's going to give you hopefully enough money, depending on cost and et cetera, nothing unforeseen, that you can do a final overlay on Sawmill back there, which I have so many complaints from, from, from the school bus drivers that they come back there that just, someone got to get in the ditch. That road's that narrow. When they pass, someone got to get off the road. That road's that narrow. When they pass, someone gotta get off the road.
Were you able to use liquid fuels for the tar and chip on Butcher Shop this year?
Yes, yeah.
And you would probably propose to use liquid fuels for the road on Susquehanna Hills?
Yes, yeah.
And then that other funding then would then go to the, for Schoolhouse? I mean, for Sawmill, that portion of-
Well, hopefully, you have to do that or else you, if you wanna spend your liquid fuels monies, and so far, we've been able to keep our fingers out of the liquid fuels strictly for paving and working on the roads. You gotta remember, years ago, we bought our trucks with it. We bought our backhoes with it. We bought everything by golly but putting roadwork down with it. It was all bought out of liquid fuels. Equipment was bought out of it.
Oh, that is an eligible expense in a liquid fuel.
For a certain portion of the liquid fuels, yes.
And so that's an eligible, you know, it's like, put up the shed out here. If I use some of the money, I can build a salt shed with liquid fuels, but I can't build an equipment shed or you can't build anything else, but I can't build a cinder shed. But I can build a building that's specified strictly to hold salt. But then you can't put nothing else in it, you know? So that's some of the things that you find out from them that in the past or just wasn't enough money here or in the budget with that because the general fund was higher in the account because they were spending those items out of the liquid fuels money and there wasn't many roads being paved or there was no maintenance, there was no tar and chip being done at all. It just wasn't being done. And so, once you stop that and left that liquid fuels money built up to the point that we could start doing it, well, the trend works out. You gotta manage it pretty close and you gotta spend what you need to get the job done, and then you gotta take a look at the long range to create a reserve. You can't spend all of it every year or you don't have enough to go for.
Based, I didn't take a look at the notes from your road survey this year. Where do you, and this kinda gets back to my question, you know, a year or so ago of, you know, do we have kind of a master plan for, you know, what, are we addressing our roads in a meaningful way so that we don't get real far behind? You know, where do you see us going from, okay, you laid out kind of 2014. Where might we be headed in subsequent years? Do you have any idea?
Well, I guess, John, you know, you can make a five-year plan, which you had here before, but then there was no money to implement it. Had a five-year road plan here. We're gonna do this, do that, do this, do that. We had no money to implement it. And that's a fact. It was all laid out, but you spent the liquid fuels money and didn't have any money to do anything with it. And so you take this, I'm gonna tell you how you take, how I take a look at it. You take the most urgent roads out there and try to do something with them and try to give some, some getting to cracks and stuff sealed up, healed up, so that they don't deteriorate until you can get around them. We got so many of them that are getting passed putting tar and chip on. I mean, tar and chip in the whole road like we did Butcher Shop. Butcher Shop looks pretty good, looks pretty nice. You'll get ten, twelve years out of that. Some people like it, they don't. From the Duncan intersection to Foutsas, that section there, but because there maybe weren't none in there, I didn't overlay that or do that. That in reality should have had, should have had PNDOT approve. That should have been good hot mix put in there to the bottom of Foutsas. So you come around there, it's solid. We had widened it out and got the water off of it. We also have a problem there that's yet to be resolved, Stanley, in regard to that. And that's that culvert that's back in there that clogs up, that runs out over the township road. It's not ours. And somewhere along the line, the residents put that in and they filled that in. It's completely off the township right away. We have no business even being in there in a backhoe, but when it clogs up and fills up like it did the other day, we're out there on private property sticking our neck out to get that thing opened up. And it's not, it's not a good thing to have. Now, I don't know whether the authority, when they do something coming across there, have to come through there, trying to work with them to take a look at that. That if we could work together and that, we can get a bigger pipe in there. All back on private property.
Isn't that, is that right across from Foutsas apartment?
Yeah.
I understand the municipal authority has a right of way down across.
They do, that's correct. And there's some work to be done in there coming up, Lee, that hopefully when they come through there, that maybe we can find some common ground with the people on both. Everybody's upset about that water clogging up and running down across their place and et cetera, but nobody that lives there in those places now had anything to do with putting that in originally. And it's not ours. But yet, we catch an awful lot of flack about it when it clogs up and it happens. Back to what you're saying, John, how do you plan that? I say you plan it with the best of the money you got to do the job at that time. And if you don't have the money, well, then you better sit back and do some maintenance and fix your infrastructure and get your culverts brought up to snuff, put a little bit of guardrail in and et cetera, till you get liquid fuels monies in, till you get enough to pave them out.
And I guess this goes to the point that the question I had was, are we realizing that the township invests money in roads and you have liquid fuels money in roads? Liquid fuels, you're not gonna do anything about. That's kinda fixed until they get, until we get a tax increase. It's kinda fixed. Okay, so now are we as a township investing at an acceptable rate so that we don't, you know, just patch our roof, patch our roof, patch our roof, and then all of a sudden, ten years from now, the whole roof craves in?
Well, if liquid fuels gives us a hundred thousand dollars a sum a year to pave road, I wish the township could give me a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and that's the question I-
The question is, if you wanna do that, come to the meeting, make a motion to increase taxes with additional monies for the road. I'll be glad to entertain it.
Okay.
It's only where you're gonna get it.
No, no, and, or you may, or as having that five-year plan or that ten-year plan, you make the case.
You know what I'm saying.
I know, I know. And I know no elected official wants to talk about raising taxes. I accept that and I understand that. But as a responsible public official, you've gotta make that assessment and determine that, yes, you know, I need, we need to do this because, duh, 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 duh. And so that, and, but you aren't gonna be able to do that unless you actually have the data to back it up and say, this is why we're doing it. That's the point. That was my point of why I was saying, you know, should we not have a longer-range view of our needs so that we can, so that the roof doesn't collapse ten years from now?
Well, you can take a look at that and you can say you can provide the data and this is it and still gonna be unpopular when the time comes.
It is, it is.
It is, and that's what you gotta understand. At the present time, nobody hurt our general fund or our budget any more than what Henry Holman did with the road crew when I said that I would take over and finish it, do it in 2010. Because the first time in a couple of years, I burned thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund just trying to get our infrastructure straightened out and getting things fixed up a little bit better. Never was there ever that kind of money spent and never did it hurt anymore in our general fund and those dollars that the township side put into our roads out here to try to preserve yet what we had.
But it was needed.
What's that?
It was needed.
Okay, and so that, therein is a justification for it. It was needed, okay? And so now, a lot of that, in those years, there was a big hammer put on that to get that done. And at the present time, you know, you're slowly but surely catching up on that infrastructure side of it, which I can show you roads out here yet that are saw cut, that were saw cut before I took office in 2004 to put culverts in. And they're still saw cut to this day and have never been replaced. It's not that they're not on our list. Those saw cut ones are in better shape than a lot of other ones that never made the list to be put on that need replaced real bad. And you can't, you, the worst thing you wanna do is be out here putting culverts in right ahead of a new paved road, which has been the practice for years. You need to get them in, let them settle down and try to get something a little better than what we've been doing. And lengthen them and getting them wider than a twenty-foot piece put in the middle of the road where they fall in at the end of the culvert. We've been, we've put extensions on culverts all over this township where the road were falling in, right on the edge of them. We still got some more to go. We've implemented in with this, skipping guardrail up at different places. And we've been putting a little bit of that in, which another thing was never, ever done before. Never. We just didn't do it. And so some of these things that we're doing out here is things that the township and the road crew never, ever done, and we're doing a tremendous amount of it without having expensive engineering getting it done. And believe me, we were paying a price just to put a culvert in. Yes, Jody?
At the risk of pissing you off, and you know, but I'm gonna ask, how much longer are you gonna volunteer?
What's that?
How much longer are you gonna volunteer?
As long as the man upstairs gives me breath, Jody.
Okay, I just, I put it out there every year because that's gonna make a big impact. You know, the Henry Holman put the biggest hit on the budget with thirty thousand. When you hire a full-time roadmaster to replace you when you're done volunteering, that's gonna be a huge hit.
And okay.
That's the only thing, I just, I put it out there again. I didn't wanna stir anything, but it's in the back of everybody's mind every year at this time.
And you know, it would really be nice if we had somebody else that'd be willing up someday to stand up by golly and do the same that I done. Stanley, aren't you fed up with, why you could come out and do this? You look good out on the road. Get out of that grocery business.
Henry, I'm not telling, I'm not agreeing with Jody. The scary part is, John mentioned a hundred thousand extra, you mentioned a hundred thousand extra. I just, I guess, what scares me is, you do a damn life job out there, that's the easy part. Hard part is, God might take you tonight. If he does, somebody's gonna have to hire somebody to take your place at forty-five thousand a year. And that's gonna come from somewhere. I don't know what you make now, don't wanna know how much you make now, but that's gonna be a bump. It's an instant bump. And whoever comes after you is, they're gonna catch a flak for an increased budget.
It's gonna be the famous, I inherited this.
You know what I'm saying? And I know you do because you're a smart man. You know what I'm saying? Whoever comes after you, and that budget has to increase forty-five or fifty thousand and taxes have to go up because of that.
Stanley, if I wouldn't die, what would you all do? You know, if I were to live beyond my time or my time as supervisor, I would volunteer to do the very same thing I'm doing to the township by golly now. And I think that our problem is out here, why isn't there more people that wanna do that? I enjoy it. I enjoy donating the time. And I enjoy going out there and doing the road contracts and preparing them. It's at no cost to the township. Someone gotta show me where that is totally wrong and it seems everybody believes that that's wrong.
No one says it's wrong. See, you know, I can sit here and bust on you all night if I felt like it. But on the other hand, I tell people all the time, Henry Holman's a smart man. He knows what the hell he's doing. But the scary part is, someday the good Lord is gonna take it and somebody's gonna have to pay the price down the line. That's the scary part. To get somebody to do what you're doing has to know what they're doing. You know, I run a grocery store, I run a surplus store, I run a bar room. I do that tomorrow, that's easy. Go out there and work on the highway? I don't know what the hell I'm doing. You know, you do, that's what you grew up doing. And you're good at it. And that's a good thing. And the township appreciates it. I appreciate it. But someday, somebody, right, someday, somebody's gonna have to pay for that. That's the whole problem.
Well, you know, Stanley-
I mean, right now, hey, you know, it's-
I could debate you all night. At one time, the township was paying for that for a tune of sixty thousand dollars and we didn't get much for that person. Believe me, we got a lot of trouble.
No.
You know what I'm talking about. That was our township manager. And we stepped in, when he stepped-
He was a township employee, but that's-
Yeah, he was, well, okay, I'm glad we agreed on certain thing. When he stepped out of that sixty thousand dollar job, we turned that back into township. You can say whatever you want to, but, and what you're saying may be true. And the time will come. And if it does, I would think that the township ought to be grateful we got by all these years without it.
The township is grateful.
You know what I'm saying?
I just feel for the person who's gotta take the wrap the crap from down there.
My thing is, I keep looking for somebody that wants to do the same. You know, really, really wants to come out there and spend some time with us, that wants to come out there and do that, and with joy being out there every day, that got some qualifications, I look for them. I look for them.
Well, the whole problem is, in today's world, A, you're lucky enough to have a good retirement. So you don't have to worry about-
You wouldn't live on my retirement, Stanley. I don't believe very long.
I don't know. Don't know.
I know.
I'd love to respond, and I'll leave. And, you know, you're not gonna find that somebody. You're not gonna find that somebody.
Well, I'll never give up trying.
I'll take it a step further. Cause you have people that busted their ass and karma's a hell of a thing. You threaten to put somebody in jail for volunteering their time.
You don't realize how lucky you are to volunteer.
You sit there and say about volunteering, but yet I try and volunteer my time in this township and I'm going to jail for thirty days and a two hundred dollar fine. Read your contract.
I have no idea what she's talking about.
You're very lucky you can volunteer.
Mr. Oliver Holman, I think what, we do, I do appreciate what you do. But looking in the future like a five-year plan or a ten-year plan or fifteen-year plan, like we said, I could die tonight, you know, I'm not making, you know, whatever. But you and I, I mean, I volunteer all the time. For what I do, I don't get paid anything. It's just the sheer joy of serving. And I know you get the same satisfaction from it. You and I are cut from different piece of cloth than what other people today are, you know? Working in, working in the church, do you know how hard it is to get somebody to run a nursery? Most churches have paid staff to run their nurseries. You know, it's hard. It's hard. People don't want, people's lives are full with everything else today. And all we're asking is, I think all we're trying to state is that we do, honestly, we do appreciate what you've done for our township. You know, you brought the knowledge, you brought the skill, you brought the ability, and you kept costs down in that aspect. But we're looking at in the future, like John and others are saying, we're gonna get caught with our pants down. We're gonna get caught with empty pockets where we're gonna have to now start forcing out sixty thousand dollars for a township manager, fifty thousand dollars. And that's just salary, that's not even benefits. So what we're saying is that we need to be, do we start keeping money included in the budget for that day that Henry Holman's pushing daisies?
Why don't you come into the meeting and say, folks, at this year, for this plan, I see this is what we need. We need a half mill. Half mill bring you a hundred thousand dollars in. Half mill's gonna get you that money you want out there.
But can we bank it?
Bring it in here and bring it in here and propose it.
Can we bank, but can we put in, see, Governor Ridge did that back in-
But if you're, you're not, you're talking, I'm saying what it's gonna take to do it, and that's what it takes.
Oh, absolutely, I agree. And Governor Ridge did the same thing. Governor Ridge back in the early 2000s did the same thing. If you let me increase your gas tax and we let you increase your tags and your registration on your vehicle, we promise you all that money's gonna go and we're gonna start fixing roads now before that money even starts coming in. Well, I leave the state, come back and find out that all that money's been squandered. So if we, yes, it's all been squandered. It's not been kept a promise. So, well, if we ask our citizens for that half mill increase and we promise them, that money will be banked for this purpose and not touched unless it's put before a referendum, I guess. I don't know. That's crazy. Could you get too many people with opinions?
Well, you're gonna need to pay this township manager you wanna hire.
Correct.
Not bank it.
Nobody said we want to hire one of them.
No, we're saying, plan, just like we know at the church, we're gonna need new air conditioners in the next five years. So you know what we're doing in our budget? We're putting so much money aside every year in the church budget for the air conditioners.
We're setting money aside in here- We're setting money aside in here for the things we do through capital reserves.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. Are we going to be proactive that way by setting money aside for the day that Henry Holman's not here, and we don't have that individual that's going to serve like he's serving?
And when you started in 2004, our capital reserve was down to nothing. We didn't have that. We had nothing in our liquid fuels. And so that was implemented as soon as I could get on top of it to try to talk people into getting it done. And it's been done, and it's still doing.
Then let's do the same thing for a future supervisor or for super for office manager or township manager and roadmaster. Let's start doing the same. Let's start planning now. You know, I'm not wishing any harm when you're planning me, but we have to be proactive.
Is the roadmaster a is that in some townships, it's kind of like you were doing it. You are as a supervisor, you are the roadmaster and supervisor. Is that or how many how many townships actually have a paid full-time roadmaster? I mean, is that the norm?
If you have, you there's townships out there that have three supervisors. Nobody wants to work in the road. They got other jobs, et cetera. So somewhere along the line, you gotta have at least a road foreman.
Road foreman.
Someone is going to take a look at it out there.
Manage it.
Yeah, so a road foreman to keep the work going out, you know what I'm saying? And believe me, folks, I try to lay as much out for the road crew out here as they possibly can and spend the least amount of time out here as I possibly can. But the things that they're not doing is they're not looking at, they're not going out and doing the site distances and all the plans. They're not going out and taking the measurements that we need. They're not answering these calls, many of these calls that can't be answered in the daytime. I go out after people get home and answer those calls. Now, we went through this before with the roadmaster we had, and he encountered enough comp time that he didn't need to work two days a week by saying he had calls in the evenings. And so we only had people here three days a week. And somewhere along the line, and that's a fact, and not too long ago down the road that took place. And Helen will tell you, that's the truth. We couldn't keep guys on here because he was the guy that I lobbied for to get him more money than any man ever made in this township. And then we got in that situation. And it wasn't a good place to be, but I had no control over it. He was the man that was put in that position. But he always come in every week. I got comp time. Never no questions for the comp time, where he got it or whatever, but nevertheless, he had enough that he wasn't here. So you can say say whatever you want about it. We have started on a different road out here to get men out here and guys on the road crew out here that that can do a lot more by themselves.
Right.
And my men take no blame for anything goes wrong out there. If something goes wrong out there, you come to me, I'm the one that goes and deals with it. I will not let them be blamed for anything when things don't go go right out there. I take it on my shoulders myself.
You a year ago or so, you said you were gonna begin to train them to be more...
Yes.
Take more responsibility for them.
Yes.
How is that progressing?
Well, John, you know, it's hard to say that for twenty years, I never felt that I was qualified to be a foreman out here on a construction job. Twenty years before I'd take a foreman's job. I needed that twenty years' experience in my own mind so that anything that I was put up with, that I dealt with, you know, that I wasn't. I was asked many a times and then do it. You don't take someone out here that's never worked at what you're at and take them out here and cram twenty years of knowledge down their throat in a year and a half or two years. So you do the best that you can. They're better now than what they are. They've seen some things that they never thought they would see, or things that they could never do. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I've noticed that they're out there by themselves pretty much, you know, I mean, they're they, you know, two years ago, you were out there with them doing skin patching.
And I'm still out there a lot with them, only I'm doing a lot of other things. I'm there with them every day.
Yeah, okay.
In that.
But there but it seemed, you know, okay, well, that was just my question is, is are they progressing?
And I think that's the answer to what people are looking for here. Is there a progression that when you do move on? Whatever, and I'm not taking anything from you, Henry. You do a great job out there. We're happy with you volunteering. We're happy with all that. But somewhere, is there is there a guy that you can say, if I'm dead tomorrow, he can step in here and, you know, or are we working it into training him up through?
And then you have you have, yeah, you do the best you can with the work out here. And then you have other ones that will take responsibility, but only to a point. Nobody likes to get their ass chewed out. I get it about every day from some resident. And I'm kind of got used to it, but it happens. You go out and you make peace, and you try to keep things moving. Some of the guys out here, you know, I've been out along the road to say, I don't know how you take that, Henry. Well, you take it and you try to work around it.
Can you in would could you see or could you envision that that you would hire a township manager? Who would then also supervise the road crew?
I would envision that if you had if you hire someone out here, that he's not afraid to get his hands dirty. He has to be a hands-on person in this township, or you are you are headed for trouble.
Right.
I'll tell you, John, you are headed for trouble with that.
You can't sit in the office.
That's correct.
Right.
We tried that. Tried it. It got so far out of hand, you know, and some of those things, the reason the man quit was taken away from him and said it will no longer be tolerated. Well, then I'll quit. And he thought that he'd back us down, and what he did get that they were taking from him, he quit. Some of those things could no longer go. He had to go back to what his job was. So you went back to that. We managed for a while. Each guy that was hired on the road was made road foreman. I'll give you the history of it, okay? And they get township employees that can get along, and some quit for other reasons. Some go through a divorce and have family problems and leave. Other ones have other problems. Other ones can't keep their social life under control to the point they get in trouble, and the whole nine yards. So every one of them, there was nobody fired here, or the people that were running the road crew. Nobody was asked to leave. Everybody went voluntarily on their own when they had to conform to certain things. And that was to give the taxpayer their just dues out here with their work every day. I'd insist on it. And that's what I did on the job that I did out there. I was, you know, hatchet man when I had a big, I had to get rid of people. You come out there, if you worked for me, you come out there, and you gave me an honest day's work, you got an honest day's pay. It wasn't one of those things that half a day or this and I get paid freight. I expect the same thing from my employees here. They don't start late and they don't quit early. And I had no problem with them on that. I can leave and know that that's not violated.
Well, I mean, that's something you would hope that you were able to instill that in your employees.
That's the best you can hope for.
Right, right. And you work towards that.
There's an awful lot of things out here that and I go on, an awful lot of things that take place that don't meet the eye out here, don't see me out along the road, don't mean that I'm not out here with a set of plans, looking at things, making plans, doing... You go out here, you verify every driveway that goes in, you got the proper site distance or whatnot. Not everybody can do that. Not everybody wants to do that.
No, but that would be that would be the kind of thing that you'd have to look for in the person.
Yeah, and you can't have a two-man out in the road crew and expect him to leave the job to go do that with one guy there. Nobody gets anything done. Couple hours a day, take care of everything else that the township needs to keep the road crew going, keep the road contracts going. No more than a couple hours a day at the most would it take at the very most paperwork-wise and to keep things going. Road contract is so simple to do. It's so easy to set up the pre-bid meetings and the construction meetings and all that, and make sure it's apples to apples, and then also has to take someone that's not afraid to say no when you have to say no. And then you have to do that quite a lot. Back to the budget here, I hear you, what you're saying. I know it's a problem out there, and I know how you look at it.
One last question for me. Can we have a copy of the budget?
Sure, we have available. Not cast a stone lead. That says not cast a stone, that's proposed.
Anybody else?
Yeah, throw one down.
We're right. And if there's no further questions, we have nothing more in the budget.
Would we... No, you... In previous years, you had one that kind of said, okay, this is 2010, 11, 12. You got all that, John. I think you should have that in there. Is there any copies of that in there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Different years.
Do you have...
They do not, no. They do not. You guys do.
Is that possible to get that?
It's a draft document. It's up to you guys.
It's already in here. You can come in the office. Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I gave them. I just gave them the number for this.
Yeah, you gave them the budget that you have there.
Yeah.
Okay. And what you do is you build your budget off of the one that you're talking about, John, from last year. And you're gonna see basically in my line items that I'm just about the same right down along the line.
But... Well, I mean, it would go to say that with only thirteen with only a thirteen thousand dollar increase that basically almost all line items are gonna be pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same.
And that's why...
Do I got permission to give this version out, the version you guys have?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a document?
He's asking about the various year comparisons.
Yeah, that's what he's asking, you know, they're, you know...
Okay.
I don't know why you can't, Helen.
Oh, no.
They're in foul over there for every year.
Yeah, I know.
So we can come back in the office and get one sometime?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Not tonight.
No, that's fine. What, oh, okay, what another question? What where are you with the heating system in here for the building? Did you that was an issue once, though, a meeting or two back.
Oh, it's still an issue. The parts to fix our unit up here is on order, and as soon as they come in, they're gonna come and fix this. The split system's still under discussion.
In terms of you're still trying to look at options for that?
As these things fail, yes.
Oh, it's implementable on a incremental basis?
This isn't a whole central for everything.
No, I have four units on the roof that covers the different rooms.
And you would and, okay, and they're heating and cooling.
That's correct.
And what would you be looking at, okay, what are you looking at as the alternative? The existing units as cooling and in a different heating system or what?
No.
No.
No, no.
Looking to replace each unit as it fails? No?
The...
You're talking in new units, Henry, that they're putting, everybody's putting in, like Legion has them, senior sets, senior units, and we just put in.
That...
They're great, John.
They're great.
One would do this whole room.
One do whole room.
Yeah, that's it.
That's correct.
We're looking to put each room under its own little system.
You know what I'm saying?
It's air conditioning and a heat pump.
They're heat pump, air conditioning together.
Or it's the newest and the latest greatest.
They're not on the roof.
Down on the wall, when your duck worked out, then you got a condenser outside.
And the thing of it was, we took a look around here with the kids and whatnot. They can put the condensers up if a guy wants to take a look at the unsightly cosmetics of hanging on the wall out here for the condenser to get it off the ground. Or otherwise, you're gonna have to close it, or someone, if you read the paper, steals people's air conditioners out for the copper.
Right, right.
So they're not a very big unit. They're not obnoxious and they're quiet, but they are extremely efficient.
They have a C rating of like twenty-seven.
And we went back and beat up on our supplier for propane, and we now got that price lowered down for...
We have to decide on whether we want to go for a contract for six months or a year.
Year, and that's the only thing that we got at the present time. So these tanks that have been in out here, et cetera, we do have a heat exchanger up here. It has a small hole in it, not a hell thing, but it needs fixed. It's negative pressure where the side is. It doesn't come down in here the way the unit's designed. The refrigeration units on these up here have really been good. The heating units have been a little bit more of a problem, being an outside unit exposed to the atmosphere. They got some outside controllers that are exposed to the weather and whatnot. But we've never had to replace a compressor. We've never, we don't have to worry about getting refrigeration mechanics up here for them, and et cetera. But in reality, John, the system's a dinosaur. Functioning, working well, cools well.
Cools great.
Cools great, you know what I'm saying? So how long do you take it?
No one likes, not everyone wants to live in an igloo closet.
And so that's that part of it there, I would say, if you lost this unit up here in the cooling, you replace it immediately with two, what Stanley's saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's incremental. You can...
Yeah.
So what you're doing is you're looking at what would be the unit to put in, when and if that happens.
Yes, and so we've got we got numbers on that, and we took a look at it. Those things, everywhere you look, you see them today, and they are highly efficient. And so the power source or low-power user, you could do these two rooms here off our power grid out here without too much trouble. You may get farther on down the building out here with it, have to put a different panel size in down here. Power's out here, just the panels job. But they're fixed pretty good with that down here at the present time, the power sources here. So that's where we're at with it. Right now, you got heat, you got cooling at a very minimal expense. Stay with what you got at the present time. But we took a look at it, so we're prepped. Anything else?
One thing, thank you.
Not? I make a motion. We adjourn.
I second the motion.
Motion made for the second one. It was in favor. Give the consent of saying, I just have it sobered.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm gonna get a copy anyhow. I didn't know if you recorded this or not.
Oh, yeah.